Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Tuesday, January 22nd is now in session. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Booker?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Here.
Chairman Leiner?
Do we stand for the plate, please?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Thank you, oh Lord, for giving us another day. Lord, you are ever-present, the source of all wisdom and self-giving love. The sacred scriptures reveal your continued guidance in human affairs. We thank you for the many blessings granted Craven County and this nation. In these early days of this new year, we seek your mercy and rely on your revelations to guide and protect this Board of County Commissioners, all county employees, and all other county officials, whether elected or appointed. With renewed standards of ethics and a commitment to accountability, may all who serve in public office be your steady instruments in unifying, protecting, and guiding the people of this county and of this democracy to increasing virtue, greater prosperity, and witness to goodness for the world. We thank you again for the inspiration of our nation's founders and the legacy they left us. May the members of this board and all Americans be worthy of that legacy. May all that is done this day be done for your greater honor and glory. Amen.
Amen. You've all had an opportunity to look off the agenda. I'd like to make one change to the agenda. Under Department Matters, item number 2B, Report of Unpaid Taxes 2018, we're going to remove that for this meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Consent Agenda to Approve the Minutes of January 7th, 2019, Tax Releases and Refunds, Juvenile Crime Prevention, and JC Resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to mention that we have a member of the City Council here, Jeffrey Odom. Thank you, Jeffrey, for attending. And the sheriff is here, protecting us.
Vice Chairman.
Social Services. Jeffrey?
Vice Chairman, Commissioner, and County Manager, thank you for having me. We bring before you budget amendments for your consideration of approval today, and I can start with them. The first one, if you'd like to have that. The first one is Social Services Block Grant Funds. These are additional federal funding that we received in excess of our first funding authorization that we would like to have included in our budget. If you have any questions.
Do I have any questions? Motion?
Some move.
Some.
Roll call, vote.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
The second amendment that we have is for our low-income energy assistance program. These funds were funds we received in addition to what our budget estimate was when the funding authorization comes out. These are also 100% federal funds, but no county match.
Those are heating funds, right?
Yes. Yes, that program runs through the end of March until the funds are exhausted.
Some move. Second.
All right, any discussion? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I mean, did you anticipate this excess amount, or have we ever received, I can't remember, have we received this much at one time in excess?
We received more than we, than our estimate was for last year as well. We get estimates when our budget comes out, and February the state releases those, and we don't actually know the amount of funding that we get until the state passes their budget from the federal government. And then we usually get these funds, I think this allocation came out the first of December when the program starts, so that we have to look and adjust our budget, whether we should receive less, or we should receive more. We don't adjust if we receive the same that was in the estimate.
Okay. Roll call, vote.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Our third amendment that we bring before you is related to our Title III D funding. At the senior center, we received less money than we had anticipated, so we wanted to correct our budget to show the correct amount.
Okay. Motion?
Some move.
Second.
Yes.
Discussion, questions? Roll call, vote.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
And our final budget amendment is related to our senior programs. These are roll-forward funds from the previous year. We usually do this around August and September, but I think we all knew what was happening then, so if you'll forgive us for bringing it so late.
Okay. Some move.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Okay.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you, have the rest of week.
I jumped ahead on this because I had attended, the next item would be the Tax Department. I had attended a meeting, and I know there's going to be some questions, so I figured I'd hold you fellows off. I didn't mean to delay it, but I think what you have to say is very important to the constituents of our county. So I'm calling you, Ron.
Good morning.
Morning.
And thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on Hurricane Florence Damage Assessment. As we all know, when the hurricane arrived last September, it evidenced widespread damage, and especially flooding, in many areas of Craven County. In the aftermath of the storm, our office assembled a team of four damage assessment teams. There were two members per team from our department who worked the areas outside the city of New Bern. And it was evident, the 10 days we spent, 10 consecutive days doing damage assessment, beginning on that Sunday, that there was widespread damage, the likes of which we haven't seen in many decades in Craven County. The city of New Bern conducted its own damage assessment on properties within the municipal limits of New Bern, and with the help of our IT staff, we were able to combine the properties that were affected by the storm into making two lists into one. So we had approximately just under 3,000 properties that were, we had damage assessments on for Craven County, and the city of New Bern, just under 2,000. So almost 5,000 properties experienced some sort of damage from the storm. Now, as you can imagine, our initial damage assessment, even though we spent 10 days doing it and identified almost 5,000 properties, it was not, we don't think that it was a complete assessment of damage. And that's why we, with management, in the following days after the storm, devised some sort of plan to reach out to taxpayers, to get more information about the damage, and to publish information that might be helpful for them to report to us what damage they had, and what, how they might have mitigated that damage by January 1st. As you know, there is no retroactive appraisal of property for 2018, even though the hurricane occurred in September. The valuation is always set as of January 1st, so there was no opportunity to go back in time and adjust any values for 2018. But what we are charged to do, and is our goal to do, is to correctly value the property as it exists January 1 of 2019. So we sent approximately 4,620 notices to people who we knew had damage, so that they could report to us the damage that they had sustained, and to tell us, and give us information about what condition their property was in as of January 1st. Because if they have not repaired the damage as of the first day of this year, then we need to adjust the valuation to what the property, how it was reflected on the records as of January 1st. So we need to, we need to receive this information back. So far, I think through Friday, we've received about 1,700 forms in the mail of the 4,000 we sent back. And we've also received approximately 80 online forms. This form is, was developed and put out on the county's webpage, so that taxpayers could access it and fill that information and submit it online. So we've received about 80 of those. So our goal is to compile that information when the January, the listing period ends next week, and actually, week after next. And we hope to compile that information, so that we can begin visiting these properties. And the input taxpayers have in the process is, we cannot be on the property as of January 1. We cannot see all of these properties on that date. So we're relying on taxpayers to document to us the condition of their property, whether they've had the repairs completed, they're in the process. We just need to know the condition of the property on the first day of the year, so that we can accurately assess the property for this year. Now, this will be a multi-year process. It's not going, it doesn't just affect this year, it will also affect the valuation next year, because hopefully, most people will have replaced or repaired the damages, and so then we'll need to visit the property yet a second time to document that. So if the board has any questions about that process, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you, if you had any.
Anything?
Yes.
Ms. Andrew, thank you for your report. In terms of the roughly 1,800 forms that have been returned either by snail mail or online, that leaves a couple of thousand people who have not responded. What are the procedures to locate people who are not living in their homes? Because of these 4,000, a number of them are not inhabitable, and people are living in apartments, or have moved, or have...
Well, it has been our experience. We've received a number of the forms that were undeliverable. And so what, we have online resources to try to find better addresses for taxpayers, and we are remailing those forms to them. So that's, that's the effort that we're making, to try to get those forms in the mail to them. Many people have left forwarding addresses, and some of them are out of state, so they're not even in North Carolina at the moment. But we are trying to locate where they are, so we can get those forms back in their hands.
Okay, thank you.
I was, Ms. Andrew, I was one of the people that got the letter, saying that we think your property was damaged. And in fact, I did have some damage, but it was minor. And so I didn't respond. So I'm one of the ones that is not going to respond. Maybe I should respond and say, no issue, I guess, so that you know...
Well, it won't be an issue if, if the damage you had has been corrected by January 1.
Yeah, it has, yeah.
There should be no change in your assessment for this year.
Right, well, I understand that. I'm just saying, you may be, somebody may be saying, wow, we got, this person hasn't responded, do we need to follow up? So just thought, just so, I think I understand it pretty clearly, but let's just take an example of a home that the first floor was, was a house right across the street here. The first floor totally damaged, they had to come in and take all the flooring out, the drywall, and it's still in that condition. It hasn't, they're working on it, but it's, as of January 1, the house was not habitable, and the first floor was damaged. So the, if I understand it correctly, the assessment then for this year, which will be due to be paid by January something of next year, right?
Yes.
Would be reduced by the amount that the damage is? How, how do you go about figuring out, let's just say a house is worth 300,000, and now the first floor is all torn up and has to be repaired? How do we decide what the new valuation is?
Well, that's somewhat of an unknown at this time. We have to determine what sort of adjustment would be properly made to the value, and it's something our staff will have to determine when we try to reassess the properties for this year.
Okay. So, and then assuming that the property is restored this year, after it's restored, I assume there will be a new visit, and the property would be revalued, valued at probably similar to what it was before the storm?
Yes, unless there were some significant improvements made that put it in better condition.
So if they put it back in the same condition, essentially, it's going to be revalued, revalued at the rate it was prior to the storm?
Yes. Now, another, another unknown in the mix, I mean, it's, it's, we're scheduled to have a general reappraisal in 2020.
Okay.
So that should, in theory...
That could change it again.
...reset the values for all the property, but, but we are, you know, still evaluating that situation to see if it's...
And there are some properties that were damaged to the point that, for example, some of the properties maybe along the river, that part of the land is gone. It won't be recovered. So that home, that value of that property would be probably permanently reduced. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, but again, that's one of those unknowns. We don't have good data yet to try to determine how that event, how that condition affects the property value. There is some effect, we just don't know what it is yet.
Okay.
So there's still a lot of unknowns ahead of us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
What is the methodology that you were going to reevaluate the value of these properties?
Well, it, the Machinery Act, the property tax law, basically reads that you consider what the property, its market value as of January 1st. So whatever damage has occurred, we have to try to adjust the value to reflect what its value was on the first day of January, based upon the 2016 schedule of values that we're operating under.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We still got eight, nine days left before the deadline. But my question would be, you know, with not having but half of those that possibly were affected to have responded, good point brought up by my colleagues, that some have been displaced. Would it not be probably in the best interest of this board, and I think we have the authority to do it, to extend this period of, for a few, a week, two weeks, whatever? Don't we have that authority?
To extend, I think you're referring to extending the listing period?
Yes.
Yes, the board does have that authority, and could do that. We plan to accept these forms even after the listing period ends. But as a precautionary measure, or a way to extend the time for, for listing, that would be an option. And I think the board traditionally has extended it by 30 days, so that would push it out till the end of February.
I don't know about my colleagues, but I would be in favor of doing that, I think being in our best interest.
You want to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we would extend it 30 days.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, any more questions that I can answer for anyone?
If everybody's done, I just, I had a question for Mr. Andrew, based on the call I got. I want to make sure the board understands it. Ronnie, take the storm away for a second. During this period, there's always the requirement that a person who has made improvements to their property, list you and make you aware, and then list those changes during the January time period. What this form reflects, and I think there was a touch of confusion, is that same time period of normal improvements. If you built a sunroom on your house, this would be the time to let you know, so that you can reflect in the taxes. But by combining the forms, you added the improvements and the storm damage, so it can go either way, it can go up or down.
That's correct, yes.
And it's not, I think some maybe interpreted that this was a tax grab, I'll use their words. It's not that. This is the traditional bylaw Machinery Act requirement that the board has to do each year.
That's right. And the additional step we took this year by mailing those forms out was simply because many taxpayers over, sometimes don't think of the requirement in the law to list any changes that affect their value. And I wanted to pass the instruct, I think you have a copy of the letter and the form that I sent out, but what you don't have, and I'll ask Commissioner Rutherford to pass that down, is the, the actual listing instructions that go to taxpayers each year, there's some 14,000 people who own personal property, and if you look on the inside of the form, I highlighted the section there that we wrote and added to the instructions about hurricane damage. So this, the letter and the form we sent was in addition to what we normally do to alert taxpayers of their duty to list their property during the month of January.
I have one question for you, Ron. In a situation like myself, where I sold my house as damaged, the new owner taking over, how do you notify them? Where they haven't made any improvements in the house, would they qualify?
Yes, we'll certainly reappraise the property, and knowing, knowing of those that had significant damage, as you did, you should have been mailed the notice.
I did, I got a notice.
You got them.
But I'm wondering if the person now that bought my house will get a notice.
Well, we had, other than the, this instruction sheet, we didn't remail notices to those who sold, because I think the sale occurred close to the end of the year.
Well, in December.
Yeah, it was in December. We hadn't, I hadn't thought about...
Because there are a number of homes like that in Fairfield Harbor...
Right.
...where the people have sold their homes, and now they've got new owners, and the new owners, in most cases, haven't done anything to fix the houses up.
Ronnie, when you generated the mailing list on December, it was as close to January 1st, the time period, as possible, so I think you would have picked up any change in ownership when you pulled that, that mailing list, correct?
The, I believe the list that was sent to the printers was as of late November. It was the ownership as of late November, so it didn't capture any of those transfers in December.
So that might be an area that you might want to look at.
We could, we could identify those folks. There shouldn't be hundreds of them, but the...
No, no, I would say in Fairfield Harbor, I think there's probably been about 15 or 16 sales of homes that were damaged.
That's an excellent suggestion. We could and should identify those property owners that had a transfer, and send the new owner that information, certainly.
And I would just like to say that Ron came out to Fairfield Harbor and had a meeting there explaining this same form, and I think we had, I remember counting, about 63 people there, and many of them had questions, and these two gentlemen did a heck of a job in answering their questions, believe me. I mean, they had some difficult questions there, and they really handled them well. And it was well-received by the people at Fairfield Harbor.
It was a good experience for all of us, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to keep on, but if I may, just two more.
Sure.
Just clarification for me, a little bit further. Okay, now, if I, I know a number of hundred, maybe, were, to the extent, maybe had to be raised or something, and I don't know where anybody had time to do that prior to January 1. But for somebody that had major structural damage like that, most time, they've got a building permit. So you're going to catch up, you're going to catch on to their improvements to that building permit, is that correct?
That will be one of the resources we have to identify with the permit, yes.
All right. So folks doing major renovations, that's how you're going to detect that most time? Okay. Second thing, this goes in a little different direction. You mentioned about, we've got a reevaluation coming up again in 2020. How soon, this is 2019, how soon in advance do we as a board need to start having some conversations about if, and I say that as a if, we want to pursue that reevaluation in 2020? Because there, I, years ago, we were on an eight-year cycle. It was changed to six, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then now, with this one, this has gone to four. And I would go ahead and state my concerns, I mean, you know, I'm not trying to hide anything. I think we're going to see potentially a great reduction in our valuation, I'm just thinking, from what it is currently. The citizens of this county have gotten to realize if they want to maintain services at their current level, and we reduce this, the tax base falls significantly, and the only way to make it up is by tax increase. So do we want to go that route, or do we want to consider staying, extending our revaluation to another year? To some, that would be unfair, you know, but the kicker is, I mean, you know, we potentially could be looking at a tax increase if we keep everything at the same rate. So my question is, I think we need to begin having those discussions, do we want to proceed with, with that revaluation in 2020?
Can I answer your question?
Yeah.
I believe the chairman and the county manager have talked about this, and we're going to bring this to us at a later date, if I'm not mistaken.
I mean, I had anticipated it at your work session on February 18th, to have some discussion. I mean, I think your decision point, Ronnie, I think that's a fair question. I think your, your decision point is this spring. I don't think there's a certain drop-dead date in the spring that you would need to know, but I think by discussing it in February, it would give you a better picture of the amount of workload, Glenn, I'm looking at you, the workload your staff has, because you're not only doing now the reappraisal, you're having to go out and do two, maybe three, damage assessment visits to each house of those 5,000. So from a staffing standpoint, you got to make sure they have the ability to do it, or you bring in the resources that they need to get it done. So...
Mr. Chair, thank you for your forbearance. I'd like to make another comment. I'm not confident that these major repairs are going to be done by one January. As someone who's sustained major damage, our building trades here are absolutely overwhelmed. The contractor list for major repairs are in the hundreds. Most people with minor repairs can't even get somebody to call them back. So I think frankly, one January 2020 is overly optimistic. Many of these repair jobs, they're not even going to talk to anybody until, you know, May or June, and if it's a big job, you're talking months and months and months. So just from an accuracy issue, so that we don't overwhelm the staff and overstress the staff, only to have it be inaccurate, because all these things are ongoing, I think it would be well to evaluate extending it just to, just for the point of accuracy. Because I don't think one January 2020, we're going to see several thousand homes fall in repair.
Ronnie, when would you develop your, if you haven't already, your reevaluation schedule? Not your schedule of values, but your time, calendar schedule?
Well, we have already, we've already developed that, and later this month, the plan was for Glenn to begin the process of assembling that information. But if we, if we make a, if a decision is made in February, or in that timeframe, that will give us time to adjust to a delay if the board decides to go that route. As a point of information, I would like to share with you Carter County's experience. The assessor there tells me that he approached his board and requested a two-year delay in, in its revaluation. The board approved a one-year delay in Carter County. They were, they were to have valued as of January 1, 19, so they've moved it up to January 1, 2020, with the option of extending it out another year if needed. So that's, Carter County has adopted a similar, similar delay. And the, and the good news is, fortunately, because we have, it has not been eight years since we've... years since we valued, we have that option.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ron. And thank, thanks to Glenn Jones, too. Yes, sir.
Could I have a question?
I'm sorry, but we, we don't, you'd have to do this at another time. This is not a presentation meeting.
Thank you.
If you want to see me privately, I'll talk to you privately.
That'd be good. If you want to see me, I, I can, uh, figure that out.
Mr. Sam, can I see you after?
Okay. Department Matters Convention Center, Gene Higginson.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm going to ask Mr. Tom Admay, he'll be here to join me and answer some technical questions about this project. So just to kind of start off, during the FY 2018, 2019 budget process, the Board of Commissioners decided to defer making any additional repairs to the Convention Center floor slab until summer of 2020. When Hurricane Florence struck Craven County, the Convention Center sustained damage, and it left the carpet completely saturated with storm water that necessitated its removal. With the floor slab now free of carpet, the time to address the floor slab is now. In October of 2018, accidental, accident reconstruction analysis completed a 3D scan at the Convention Center so that degree of settling could be compared to previous scans. That report was included in your board packets for your, for your review. Thomas Admay, gentleman over here, is our, he's a professional, he's a professional engineer, and his firm, Engineered Foundation Solutions, has been a part of the analysis and correction of this settling issue since the problems were first discovered over 15 years ago. His analysis and recommendation was also provided in your board packets for your review prior to the meeting. The board, at the end of our presentation, will be asked to review the material provided, pose any questions to staff and to Mr. Admay, as desired, and authorize staff to enter into a request for proposal process to secure a contract that can perform the work per Mr. Admay's specifications. And I'm a picture's worth of 1,000 words type guy, so I've got some photos here for everybody to see, so they see what is inside the Convention Center as of now. First picture you see here is a picture taken just as the wind was blowing. Gives you an idea of the level of saturation that was throughout the facility. So that is inside the ballroom. What you see, of course, right here is one of our staff member walking in front of the, in front of the camera, and you see the water splashing up around his feet. Just to give you an idea of, of what was there. And again, don't have to remind anybody, this was not rainwater. This was not the cleanest water at all. This was some of the foul stuff you could probably imagine that saturated that entire floor. After, we had a remediation company come in, they removed all the carpet, and took all of the sheet rock, all the wood paneling, et cetera, up to about a three and a half to four-foot level, like what you see in that picture. We worked in there immediately, and we made, were able to limit the remediation that necessitated, you know, the repairs. Long story short, working in there quickly, getting this stuff up, it has made our repairs probably less, uh, uh, less complicated than what they're going to have to be. The rare thing, one thing we're really lucky is the dividing wall, because it is not, it was not in contact with the floor, it didn't soak up water either. So dividing wall is probably in, from all of our inspections, looks to have sustained any damage whatsoever. So after, while we had, we, so while we had the carpet up, is a good time to have that 3D scan made. Mr. Admay's come in, and he's taken some pictures, too. And what, what you're seeing now is the evidence of the increased settling that has occurred since the last time the repair was made in 2012. What you see, of course, this is in the back service hallway, you're seeing the cracking in the different joints in the masonry. This is also in the kitchen storage area. Again, this is all evidence of the settling of the slab. This is on the backside of the stairwell. And what you're wanting to notice here is the gap between the floor and the wall. And then there's a close-up picture of what that settling looks like. All these pictures were included in your, in your packet. This is a picture of the scan. I'm going to ask Mr. Admay to step up now and to explain exactly what we're looking at in the scan, and work with the orientation. Just to help with the orientation here a little bit, this would be the front entrance, when you would walk in. This would be the, the Heritage Hallway, there's circles around, and this is the back veranda. So what you're looking here in the big square is the ballroom, and this would be the kitchen area and the office area here. Mr. Admay, did you want to share anything about what we're looking at in these scans?
Could I just mention one thing to the commissioners? In 2012, we used a Band-Aid approach on this. This is a complete approach this time, okay? And the reason for that was just because most of the money went to the attorneys for the suit of it, and we only had about, I believe, $280,000.
Well, let me go check that number.
Yeah, well, it was, it was low anyway, and then we, we put, I forget the amount, but I think it was in the, close to seven or eight hundred thousand dollars. So...
Shocking.
So I just want you to understand, the Band-Aid, this is not a Band-Aid approach, this is a full approach.
So yes, so this, it's a scan of, of the floor taken after the repairs were completed. And the, let's see, this, this area was the, the area where the greatest settlement had been originally noted, somewhere up around six inches. And here, basically, they got everything within about a half an inch or so in, in the ballroom. We went on to, okay, this was a scan taken after the carpet was removed. You can see here, it's kind of a cross, toward across the ballroom, and that's where the piles were previously put in underneath the, the dividing wall, to try to reduce the potential for more problems with the dividing wall. But again, that, that area where the, the greatest settlement had previously been observed, you can see, is, is still experiencing more settlement than other areas of the floor slab. The borings that were done showed that there was large, large amount of organic material in that area, so that's not surprising. Another area where there's significant amount of settlement was over here, which is the, that stairwell that we looked at the pictures of is, is this structure right here. And if you can go back to that, there were two things about this. There's, there's both the, the gap between the slab and the wall, and there's also a crack here in the wall. So what, let's see. So what we're suggesting to do at this time is to add, add piling throughout, basically, this part of the ballroom floor. And, and, well, the, repeat, repeat the grouting process throughout the, the structure, to try to raise the floor for more even condition. Add, add piling basically through, throughout this area, try to address the, the greatest settlement in the ballroom. And then in, in areas such as, as the stairwell, between the, the offices and the kitchen, where, where that, that crack in the, in the back of that storage room was shown, and then back here in the, in the service hallway, use, use underpinning piers to try to lift the, the floor and the walls together in areas where, where the grouting isn't able to do it on its own.
Gene, if you want to do your last.
So then, so then what's our proposed timeline? Again, underline and bold, this is our proposed timeline. It's all going to depend on, a little bit at the mercy of the contractors, but we're going to try to, we issued the RFP, this, this timeline's going to be reflected in that. We proceed today with issuing the RFP and contracting. Our anticipation will be that that will be completed by mid-March, so that'll be a month on the street for the RFP, a week or so to evaluate the responses, and then two to three weeks to work on the contracting part of it. We're going to require that the contractor be mobilized by April 1st and be completed by June 1st. While that is also undergoing, we're going to proceed with an RFQ, an engagement of an architect and design team. We'll be then working on renovations, carpet, et cetera, the May through September timeline, with a target reopening of September of 2019. This is our, this is our goal.
Any questions? Yes?
I, I do, as someone who's new to the board, I'm a little confused between what's being done. We're talking micro piles and lifting, and we're talking renovations and designs. Could you quickly summarize the, the pieces of this project from micro piles to carpet laying? Because this looks like a, everybody else may be familiar with it because they've been working on it, but I at least am not.
Okay. So the first step will be to get the floor, to get the floor level, to get the work on the floor done.
And that's micro piles.
Be honest with you, that's a, that's a dirty job. I mean, it's not, it's not going to be clean. You don't want to bring in and start putting in new carpet, et cetera. Some of the areas where we're looking to work, in the back hallway, the kitchen, don't have carpet. So we can work in the ballroom and the hallway first, get those areas completed, then can start working on the carpeting and the finish work in that area. So it's going to be a, two paths. Try to coordinate, of course, so nobody's stepping on each other's toes, nobody's in each other's way, but also not do any damage to the work that's already being done. So you have an RFP process, because we've got our engineer on staff that's got the history with it. They, Mr. Admay's going to be right there to make sure that they're following the specs and everything is, is going according to, to that plan. The next process is to issue the RFQ for the design and the carpet, and project management to oversee that part of the construction process, any change to design, or any change to, to fit, to finishes or whatnot that we want to have completed, and have those two items going concurrently. Because while they're working through the design process, that, they could actually be working a month or so already inside the facility. The lead time is the carpet, is you, is it takes time to order the carpet. Carpet technology, believe it or not, has changed a lot in the last six years. And where we didn't have options in 2012, we've got different options now for hospitality grade carpet that should make that process faster and easier, both an easier installation and faster time to have it ordered and have it, have it ready.
I think the word that's catching me up is renovations. When I hear renovations, I think redesign of the layout of the Convention Center. Is that what we're talking about?
Gene, can I, let me, let me, let me try this one. So you really got three different projects, okay? Let me, let me break them down. Project one is what we're here today to go on the RFP. That's just lifting the floor, doing the, the piles in the ballroom to stabilize the slab, and help with piers to tie everything together in the areas that are not in the ballroom. Second project would be coming back and putting the Convention Center condition like it was before. When he says renovation, it may be that we change out some lighting or some things to kind of refresh it a little bit, Commissioner Mitchell. It is 20 years old, so we were kind of already thinking about that anyway. And the third project is the mitigation project that we'll do with FEMA. And that would be to take the infrastructure, like your air conditioners, refrigeration generators, and lift those things up on the outside so we avoid this again in the future. We're also, as, as in part three, probably looking at some type of retaining wall in the back as a water break from the storm surge that we saw. That really won't affect us opening this facility. Really, project one's got a defined timeline that has to get done before project two. Project three can happen anytime, even when we're open.
Thank you, I started looking for it.
What we're going to be looking for the board, and I think what Gene's coming back, when we go out for the RFQ in February, and we start scoping the renovation and carpet project, that's where we'll come to you guys and say, are you wanting sort of the low cost, the medium, or the high from a renovation standpoint? What's your tolerance there? Project one is funded with the remaining settlement money, based on the engineer's estimate, okay? Now, if it does come back high, obviously, we'd have to adjust that. Phase two's funded with insurance money. You have three different policies on the Convention Center that will help pay for the renovations that come forward. And project four will be paid for by the state and federal government through the mitigation process. So really, the only county dollars that you'll be out will be in this part if it exceeds what you already have in your capital reserve account. That was a little winded, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure.
That's exactly what I wanted, thank you.
Mr. Booth.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. A couple of things. Nothing is forever. And 20 years, I guess, considering where this building was built and the, I wasn't here 20 years ago, but almost, I got here right about when this place opened. So the, the concern is, once we do this, what's our level of, what level are we as far as it's going to be permanent? In other words, permanent, nothing is forever and ever and ever, but, but we're not going to be going through this again in five or seven or eight years.
I'll let the expert speak on that one.
Yeah, the, so the, so the, the structure itself is, is piles, supported on timber piles. And you can see like, a good place to see here is around the edge of the ballroom, where the, these walls are supported on driven piles that go down to the limestone morrow, really haven't moved. The, then the site was filled, and, and the weight of that fill over the, the soft soils and, and everything else that was there has, has caused the settlement. And that's, that, that will be an ongoing phenomenon, that, that's going to continue long after this building's gone. But, you know, and, and even with these repairs, probably in 20 years, whenever this, you know, the new carpet gets, you know, it's time to replace that carpet or, or update the facility, you know, whoever's here then would probably have some low areas that they would, that they would need to go in and do some, some grouting on. And that, that's just inevitable with this, you know, with, with this, even with, well, this area of pile support, it should be much less of an issue, but you're still going to have significant areas that are, that are slab on grade, that, that are going to experience some movement. And there's, short of doing something really radical, removing the floor slab, replacing it with a pile-supported structural floor, you know, it's just sort of a, a feature of this building. But it, but in terms of keep, keeping everything functioning properly, and having it where it's, it's really just more of a, a maintenance type, type thing over the, the very long term, that, that's kind of where, where we're at.
Okay, thank you. The second comment would be, I guess, because this facility is in my district, I have gotten a lot of questions on the timeline. And I, and I just want to make sure we all understand the impact that this is having. Two different people who own restaurants downtown have shared with me that their business is down dramatically. Now, that could be for a variety of things, but basically, these aren't new places. These are places that have been here a long time. They're attributing it to the fact that we aren't getting the tourism, the people who are normally here for functions, not here this year. And, and that's nobody's fault, but it's a fact. One, I noticed one store on Middle Street closed last week, a retail store that's been there for many years. I don't know if it had anything to do with, with that, but I, I just want to make sure that we all understand the impact that this is having, and the importance of getting this thing back online as soon as possible. And I know, Jack, and we've talked about that, I know that we all understand it's important. But to the person who's got their livelihood tied up in a, in a downtown business, I attended the Swiss Bear meeting last week. The comments that came from several people was, please encourage all your friends and your colleagues to support downtown, to come downtown to eat, because we're all feeling the effects of this Convention Center being closed. So the timeline is really critical, and, and I know it is what it is. And I think September's good, if we can get it up by then, that'd be great. We just need to make, we need to, to jump over and around any hurdles that come up to try to make that happen.
Yes, sir. Gene, can you go to the timeline slide, please? Commissioner Booker, you bring up a, a great point. I think this is aggressive, but I think there's places you can make time up if you have the right contractors. And we're going to spend a lot of time making sure we get those. Obviously, the, the two parts that, that there's the most, you know, time restriction would be how the, the actual floor slab repair goes, and then at the finish work with the carpet paint and all that. What's concerning to me about it is, you know, we're, we're, we usually book things in advance, right? Significantly in advance. And we have to, at some point, turn on that switch and say, we're booking for October of 2019. So, I'm counting on Gene and Mr. Admay and the other folks to start trying to pin that point down so we can turn the switch on. And then that gives some comfort to those businesses to know, hey, it's coming back. Let me tell you, and I don't, I don't mean this disparaging against a local business, okay? I want to make that clear to the public and to the commissioners. But I am concerned about the DoubleTree downtown. It is a significant partner of ours. And we have to maintain those hotel rooms to make the convention center work, period, storm or no storm. So, as we move forward, there's going to have to be conversations to learn their plan. And I know they probably want the same information from us, so it's definitely a mutual type relationship. But we need to start coordinating our repairs with theirs to make sure we open in a symbolic nature together.
That's a good point. And I would just say, also, it is, it is the, I think, having been in the retail business most of my life, it is, it's easy to blame other things for your deficiencies. And, and I think it's important that we encourage these local businesses and remind them that, hey, they've got to do extra things right now to make this, make their business survive. And the, the other point is, I don't think the average, I know the average person, even the local downtown business people, don't have a clue what we've got to go through to make this happen. You know, why can't you get, you know, why, how can it take a year? And I think we, as, as a group, need to make sure we're ready to say, hey, you know, raising the floor, putting pilings in, this is not 90-day work. This is big time. So, I think that's the other piece of the puzzle. We need to be informed so that we can inform.
Yes, sir. And I think Mr. Hodges and I, we met with our FEMA folks, state folks, we have prioritized this as mission number one. Getting this back open, getting the tourism industry back stabilized from a county perspective. So, this will take a lot of the energy moving forward. Once this gets up and going, we'll start working on some of the other projects that we have, particularly the courthouse. That's the second most complicated, maybe first, depending on who you're talking to. But those two are going to be the targets for this year.
And last but not least, our tax dollars coming in are diminished when we don't have visitors. Because they bring, they bring money, they spend money, the hotels, the whole piece, there's a, a whole bunch of pieces to this puzzle that, that are damaging. And part of it will be the amount of income we give the county.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Two questions on that one, talking about the income. Yes, first question, and these are related, is, once the convention center starts booking, or is able to start booking for conventions, events, and things like that, how long will it take to get up to a, I'm going to call it a 2017 filled calendar? I.e. to get back to the norm in terms of convention center actually booking business? That's question number one. Question two is, at what point would you be comfortable telling the convention center staff, okay, start booking in seven weeks or 12 weeks, you're going to be up and ready to go? And in other words, this is a roundabout way to get into it. At what point can we anticipate a fully booked calendar?
Right. So, question one, they have been rebooking some things. So, they canceled them and rebooked some things that people were very willing to rebook. Some of the things that we had to say no to are cyclical, every three years. They're west, central, east. So, we'll have to get back in line on a few of those. Military balls are always picking Wilmington, Jacksonville, Morehead, New Bern. So, we'll have to get kind of back in the mix on those things. From a standpoint of when I would feel comfortable telling staff to book, it would be when this first part gets done, because I think we can pinpoint the timeline on paint, floor, sheet rock a lot quicker than we can somebody in there driving piles. I am concerned a little bit about what we've lost in trying to rebuild those relationships. Two of the convention staff have solely been doing that from the time the storm hit, because we've, of course, had to reassign all the staff, except for those two, to different apartments. I think within a couple of year cycle of conventions, we should be back to normal. I'd say by 2020, 2021, we should be back, but it's a finicky business. You know, they pick who's got the best deal, the best facility, and their folks want to go visit. I'm hoping that there's, as Commissioner Booker says, there's this natural attraction, hey, New Bern's rebuilt. We ought to go back there symbolically. And then, once they get here, we capture them and they stay. That's our goal.
And you brought up a very important point about the hotel.
Yeah.
There are things that the hotel can do that can bring that business back to back.
Correct. We not only count on it for hotel rooms, we count for overflow space, their ballroom, their food service. I mean, it's, it's only full-service hotel in downtown New Bern.
Okay. Do we, do we need to then actually act?
Yeah, you need a action to move for proposals, correct?
Authorize staff to issue the order.
Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, next is appointments. We have the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, we still have those six. I'm not going to get into talking about this, I keep talking about this every meeting. Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council, we have one vacancy. And the Craven Asian Planning Board, we have one. I spoke to Commissioner about that, and that'll be coming. Current appointments, Craven County Board of Adjustments, applicants must be from specified zoning areas.
I'm, I'm still working on it.
Okay. Craven County Planning Board, the term Drew Willis is due to expire January 30th. He was first appointed December 16th, and he wishes to be reappointed.
I'm still working on that as well, so.
Okay. Local Emergency Planning Committee, Dr. Stuart Want has submitted the application to pay and pensionment, attachment 5B, seeking appointment. Do you have a copy of that? Do I have a motion to appoint him?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we'll do that by acclamation. Upcoming appointments, Craven County Clean Sweep, Fireman's Relief Fund, Fire Attacks Commissioners, and the Craven County Board of Adjustments. Okay. County Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I have three items for the board's consideration today. The first is a routine matter involving an initial offer to purchase property that the county acquired through a tax foreclosure. The address is 415 Scott Street here in New Bern. We have received an offer of $5,000 for the property. The past due taxes and the cost of collection was 462704, and the current tax value is 16,000. As the, as the board knows, should the board accept this offer today, the offer will be subject to publication in the upset bid process. When that is concluded, we'll bring it back for final approval by the board.
Do you make a motion to the? Do you have a motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it.
The next two items are variations on a common theme. Essentially, when a property owner is delinquent on both city and county taxes, the county handles the tax foreclosure and protects the, the city's interest in that process. And that is handled by essentially the deed at the end of the process. The deed goes from the commissioner to the particular municipality in the county, and the amounts due to each governmental unit are specified in the deed so that when the property is eventually sold, the proceeds are applied proratably. And it, it happens with, with some regularity. In fact, I think I've presented the situation to the board several times over the past few months. There were some issues with that process on two tax foreclosures that were handled by Zacchius Legal Services. The first involved the town of Vanceboro, parcel 1V-06-007. In that foreclosure, the town's tax lien was actually preserved and protected through the process. The town just was not listed in the final deed. So, we will need to go back and execute a deed essentially from the county to the town of Vanceboro and the county that will outline the amounts due and confirm the prorata ownership interest, if you will, so that when we sell the property, we can divide the, the proceeds as the statute requires. So, subject to questions or further direction from the board, we would appreciate a, a motion, second, and vote to approve the execution and delivery of a deed that's necessary to correct this situation.
Can move?
We have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? And there's no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Thank you. The third final item, again, it's a variation on the, the matter that you just approved. The difference is, when Zacchius Legal Services handled this foreclosure, the city of New Bern's tax lien actually was not protected in the process. And what, what does that mean? The, the city of New Bern was not included in the process. So, the ownership of the property now is in Craven County, however, subject to the city's tax lien, which is, would, would make it very difficult for us to sell the property. The fix is essentially to deed the property from the county to the county and the city, just like the matter you, you approved, and we'll get the, the numbers straight, and then we can proceed with listing the property and marketing it. When the funds come in, we'll distribute the funds as the statute requires. As with the last matter, subject to the board's questions and other direction, we would appreciate a motion to approve the execution and delivery of a deed necessary to correct this situation.
No move?
We have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? And there's no discussion? Every, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it.
Thank you, that's all for me this morning.
Mr. County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Just a couple, really, calendar updates for you today. Wanted to remind you, January 31st and February 1st is the Essentials from County Government in Greenville. I know a large majority of the Commissioners have signed up to go. There's a two-day event, one day is for everybody, and then day two, you split between veteran county Commissioners and incoming county Commissioners, or ones that were just elected. So, if you'd like to ride with us, we'll be having a caravan from here, just letting Nann know sometime this week, so we can plan for that. Also, wanted to make you aware, March 2nd through the 6th is the NACO Legislative Conference in Washington, DC. This is an opportunity not only to talk with federal officials about the county's goals and the state of North Carolina, our association's goals, but it would also be a great opportunity to plug some of our Hurricane Florence relief items to Congress and the Senate that represents us here in Craven County. We will need to know relatively soon if you have, plan on making that trip. We have heard from a few of you. Again, we will have a caravan here if you'd like to ride. If not, we'll certainly help you make other arrangements to travel. We do want to highlight that. It is sort of a unique opportunity where we would have the right people in the right room to, to make our messages there. So, want to point that out. Today, at 1:00 PM, Governor Cooper will be having a cabinet meeting at the History Center. Each of you received an invitation last week, just wanted to remind you of that. I'll be attending. I know Vice Chair Mark will be attending and a couple of the Commissioners. So, if you have time, I think it'd be a good opportunity to do that. And lastly, want to just give you a quick update. I attended the ACT meeting a couple of weeks ago, and just want to give you an idea of what they're up to. They're still doing their normal federal and state legislative agenda that they have, making significant progress on that. Obviously, with some changeover in DC, it'll take some time to build the relationships and figure out who's on first, so to speak. One of the more interesting things that I noted in the meeting was they have received a state grant from the NC MAC, and it will create overlay districts in Carteret, Pamlico, and Craven Counties for the base, and the subsequent bombing ranges and facilities that they use in the three counties. It's a neat project, it's been two years into work. They, they actually hired a consultant at that meeting. They had had a vetting process and look forward to get started on that. They will be seeking input from us, which I think is a nice thing. Obviously, we probably have the biggest impact between us and the city of Havelock with needing to protect the base. So, look forward to working on that. Other than that, they're getting ready to kick off a fundraising campaign pretty soon. They're working on that. I know Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Mitchell are both engaged in that, so I'll keep you posted on how that's going. But that's my report, unless you have any questions or topics for me.
Does anybody have any questions, the County Manager?
Thank you, sir. We do have a closed session at the end of the meeting.
Yep. Okay. Our Commissioners' reports. Commissioner Booger?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I will state, the Chairman and myself, along with staff, did attend the public meeting we had there in Fort Bommel concerning, concerning the Nelson Road and also the Maple Cypress Bridge. We, we'll be reporting back to you at a later time. I think we did come up with a recommendation to bring to the board, I think. Heard from the citizens, and we're very appreciative for all the input from the community that we got. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Just one thing, sir. The North Carolina Military Affairs Commission will be meeting on the 19th of February. This is the first quarter meeting I will be attending since I have, have a seat on that board. But if the County Manager or Assistant County Manager is interested in attending, I think it would be very helpful. That's the 19th of February at 12:30 is the moment. And I, I will add that, you know, I have a voting seat. However, having the municipal or county managers there makes a big difference in terms of showing the interest in the county in, in military affairs. And, you know, right now, under the Trump administration, the base is in good shape, and we have received significant support from the General Assembly. However, nothing lasts forever, and things can change. So, I believe that local support, and very visible local support, is critical to protecting our base and its economic impact.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McCabe?
Chairman, I don't have anything. Is this present in the moment?
Commissioner.
I'd like to say that we had, once in a time back then, Martin Luther King prepped us yesterday. It was really chill, pretty, pretty cool out there yesterday morning, but we had a nice, good crowd. Glad to see our Commissioner Mitchell and some of the officials at this meeting yesterday morning. And everything went out real smooth. Did outstanding job, I'm just, I'm so proud of, just to keep remembering where we came from and how Dr. King really worked hard to see that we would come together as one country and mostly as one world, people all over the world. I'd like to say that during the time that Dr. King was in Alabama, I was traveling up to Seattle, Washington, my wife and my family. The wife was pregnant at, at that time. And we ran on, we rode the bus up there. We got to Alabama, couldn't get off the bus, because they were demonstrating. Said they wouldn't let her get off the bus, so we made it up there. And so, I got up there and I, my wife wanted to stay up there, but I, I wanted to come back to New Bern. So, she finally gave in. We came on back, came on back to New Bern. On our way back, we, we headed pretty, pretty rough at times. We, we drove all the way to Southern Route coming back, and then we hit a, a southern part, because California wasn't that liberal, I tell you that, that I went up there. But, but when we came back, when I, no, when I got to But we, but we came back, no, when I got...